This is the County Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, April 26, 2011. Please turn off all cell phones, pagers, anything that makes noise. This evening, for our Pledge of Allegiance, we have a special guest to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked one of Cleveland's finest, recently retired Cleveland Police Officer James Simone, the Second District's famous, or maybe infamous, number 387 Cleveland Super Cop, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Officer Simone served the Cleveland Police Department from February 20, 1973 until May 21, 2011, a total of thirty-seven and a half years. He's a Vietnam veteran who was shot twice in combat during Vietnam and twice as a Cleveland Police Officer. He's written over seventy thousand tickets and was the first Cleveland Police Officer to film all of his arrests at his own expense. He's arrested over seventy thousand people since he started keeping track eighteen years ago. He's arrested murderers, bank robbers, and even given a ticket to an FBI agent and a nun. Just two years ago, he dove into the icy Cuyahoga River and pulled a woman to safety from her sinking cars. He's made the difference in many, many citizens' lives, in addition to which he has ten dogs, which really makes him a super person. It is with pleasure that I ask Officer Jim Simone, one of Cleveland's, one of the county's most dedicated public service, to serve as the leader of the Pledge of Allegiance. We recognize him for his service and dedication to the city, the county, the state, and the nation. This county has been a safer place because Jim Simone has been a police officer. Would you come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Officer Simone.
Thank you for the kind words.
And thank you for your years of service. All right, for our moment of silent meditation, I'd like to call on Councilman Dale Miller.
Madam President, my colleagues, there's been a lot of very severe weather, and there have been tornadoes and other rough weather, and some people have lost their lives and people have lost their homes. I would just ask for silent reflection for the families and for their welfare and comfort. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
President.
Mr. Brady.
Present.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we start our meeting tonight, I'd like to make a few comments regarding council's efforts to provide information to the public and on the county's activities. The county website provides full agendas prior to any meeting. The county website provides the minutes of every meeting, as does the, for all the committee meetings. The county website provides full video for all meetings and special meetings. We are in the process of having that done on a live-stream basis, and we will make that available as soon as possible. We have full audio of all of our committee meetings, which are available on request, and as soon as possible, they will be on the county website. Once again, live-stream of these committee meetings are being made available. This evening, the council will pass an ordinance to provide free parking for the convenience of the public so that they may come to our meetings at no expense. Besides making these council videos available, we are currently working on ordinances that will make all of this information more available to the public through the county system. We have recently hired Mr. Jeff Maury, who is our technology expert, and he will attempt to provide some of these, and this will be at no expense. So before council makes any decisions regarding purchasing of equipment or services, we have to make sure that we follow all current procurement procedures to assure all vendors are given a fair and equal chance to make these products available and to, so that we can consider all of our options. We wish to make every effort to make all of our meetings open to the public, and I believe that we have followed every letter of the law. All right, is there any public comment on agenda items before we start our meetings? Has anyone signed in?
Madam President, no one has signed in to speak.
All right, the item six on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of April the 19th, 2011. That was a special meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
A move by Mr. Gallagher and seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the minutes are adopted. Mr. Fitzgerald, we missed you last week.
I missed you, too. That wasn't supposed to sound sarcastic, I really did. I just have a few, a few brief things, some, most of it having to do, as usual, with personnel. One is, we are keeping a running tally on our total personnel levels and how many employees we've added, how many have been subtracted either because of attrition or layoff, and I'm going to get you, get you those specific numbers. HR is going to provide those to you, just so that you have those. It's a frequently asked question, it's, it's important. I can tell you, there's approximately a hundred fewer employees as of today than there were on January 1st, and the savings so far are between four and five million dollars. I don't have the exact number with me right now, but we're continuing to, each department is being tasked with coming up with what their optimum staffing levels are, and further personnel reductions will be done, again, in a systematic and a methodical way. And it's all, some of them are going to be dependent on the, the process we're going through to determine everybody's classified employee status and that, and that, the selection of that vendor is, is basically complete now, and that work is going to begin, and I would anticipate it's going to be brought to a conclusion in short order. A few other things, just with specific, with specific personnel actions. First is that, as, as you know, we issued a press release on it yesterday, and he also had an opportunity to meet with a couple of you yesterday. Wade Steen, who is a very experienced and distinguished CPA and municipal finance expert from Franklin County, is, is my nominee to be the county's first fiscal officer. I think he has a unique combination of experience, both in the private sector and the public sector. He's also worked in a, in a large metropolitan area, running fiscal operations, and I think he's going to be a great addition to, really, an outstanding team that we're putting together here. I know he hasn't had an opportunity to meet with all of you, but he will be available to all of you, and I would look forward to you scheduling a confirmation hearing for him as soon as your schedule allows. I also would anticipate, Madam President, that we will be making an announcement regarding a medical examiner, probably by the end of this week, and again, we'll make him available to members of the council for your deliberative process as soon as possible. Also, as you mentioned, we have a new Chief Information Officer who is not subject to council approval. Mr. Jeff Maury, I know he's introduced himself individually to many of you, and I think he was at your meeting last week. He has already hit the ground running. I did think that it would be perhaps useful to council if he would, now that he has been here for a couple weeks and he's already solved most of our technology problems, if he could make a presentation to you just about what he's seen, and kind of a scan, if you will, an inventory of what some of the technology challenges that are out there that he's seeing. Again, we're proud to have him here. He has, again, a unique combination of both private and public sector experience, and, and we like what we're seeing from him so far, and his observations, I think, would be useful to you as you deliberate about a number of items that you'll have before you in the, in the coming months. On the economic development front, I just wanted to, to note that we had an exciting event yesterday where the, the components for the Lincoln Electric wind turbine were delivered at the port, and it was really a, kind of a convergence of two very important things. First of all, the county had made a significant investment. We were the biggest public sector investor in that project. There's $350,000 in county, in county funds that made, helped make that possible. It is a tangible investment in, in wind energy, which Northeast Ohio is, is positioned to take a leadership role in, in the century, we, we believe. We're partnering with an important, an important partner in the private sector, being Lincoln Electric, which, in, in their facility in Euclid, in Councilwoman Simon's district. And it's also been a part of a nice relationship that we're developing with the port, in trying to encourage the use of the St. Lawrence Seaway as a, as a, as a trade route, basically, to Europe and the rest of the world. So there's a lot of good things happening with that, and it was important symbolism, but I think is also important substantively. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. All right, item eight, consideration of a motion of council for first reading adoption under suspension of the rules, and this relates to the Board of Revision matters. Mr. Miller?
Madam President, I move that Rule 9D requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read at three separate regular council meetings, and Rule 7E requiring motions of council to be read at two regular council meetings, and Rule 13A requiring reference to committee be suspended, and that motion number M-2011-0027 be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
A move by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Germana. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, the rules are suspended relative to 0027. Madam Clerk, we have an amendment to that, or do you want to read it as is, or? Item 0027 has a list of six people. My understanding is that HR did not receive the necessary paperwork for Mr. Jeffrey Leidl, number two, and we're going to delete him from the, the list. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Motion to do that?
So I need a motion to do that?
Madam President, I make a motion that we remove Jeffrey Leidl from the...
For the tonight's consideration, until we see the, the information, the necessary information from HR. Seconded by Ms. Simon. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Madam Clerk, the amended rule, a motion.
Everyone approve that emotion?
Yes.
Okay.
It was moved by Conwell and seconded by Simon.
Thank you. Motion number 2011-0027, a motion to appoint individuals to serve on boards of revision for Cuyahoga County, as listed on the agenda, Mr. James McMullin, Mr. Robert Hennessy, Mr. Michael Alexander, Mr. Roger Kramer, and Ms. Ann Gerhardt.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Greenspan. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, item number nine, consideration of motions of council for first reading and referral to committee. These involve the Cuyahoga County Audit Committee, which is provided for in Section 1101 of the county charter, and Section 1102 that defines its function. The audit committee were made up of the fiscal officer, who has just recently been nominated, president of council, the executive, and two citizens who will be serving at no, for no salary.
Motion number 2011-0028, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Veronica A. Rice to serve on the county audit committee.
All right, and then we'll refer this matter to Ms. Conwell's committee for Human Resources.
Motion number 2011-0029, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Nick Neforos to serve on the county audit committee.
Also refer to Human Resources. All right, item number 10, committee report and consideration of motions of council for second reading adoption. I had discussions with Mr. Miller regarding whether we need to suspend the rules as to whether or not, it was two meetings for a motion or three meetings, and apparently under the old rules, it was two meetings, but I think that under, in the utmost of caution, we're going to suspend the rules. Mr. Miller?
Madam President?
Yes?
The, the controlling factor is that, that the charter says that, that all, all actions of council are done by ordinance or resolution, and it requires three readings to suspend. So, so we've been doing that on these, even though the old rules only require two readings on a motion, but the new rules are going to fix that.
All right, so we're going to do a motion to suspend?
And, and Councilwoman Conwell is prepared to offer that motion.
Sorry, Ms. Conwell. Ms. Conwell, sorry.
Rule 90 requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read at three different regular meetings of council be dispensed with, and that Motion 2011-0018, 19, 20, 21, 24, 25, and Motion 26 be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
All right, move by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Mr. Miller, to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. I would refer you to page number seven for your minutes for the item 0018. Madam Clerk?
Motion number 2011-0018, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Norberto Cologne to serve on the Public Safety Urban Area Working Group.
Move to adopt.
Second.
By Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Is there any comment, any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and Mr. Cologne is here, I believe. All right, congratulations. All right, item number 0019 will be on page nine.
Motion number 2011-0019, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of individuals to serve on the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission. One, Mayor Eileen Patton. Two, Mayor Michael Proka. Three, Ed Jurs. And four, Nathan Kelly.
Move to adopt.
Move by Mr. Jones and seconded by Ms. Simon. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, item number 0020.
Motion number 2011-0020, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of individuals to serve on Tax Incentive Review Councils, Jeffrey Schiffman, Jonathan Holliday, Andrew Revie, and Joe Masula as chair.
Move to adopt.
Move by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Mr. Con, Ms. Conwell. These appointments are made pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 570985 Tax Incentive Review Council, and I spoke with Mr. Boyle earlier this week, and he's going to make a brief presentation. Once again, these are persons who will be serving without pay, and he's going to give us a brief explanation, and these are on page 11 of your materials.
Thank you, Madam President and members of council. Again, the Tax Incentive Review Councils are established by the Ohio Revised Code. Each community in Cuyahoga County, with an exception for the City of Cleveland, each community that offers any type of tax incentive, whether it's a CRA or a TIF or something along those lines, by statute, has to have an annual meeting, and it has to have a Tax Incentive Review Council that meets to discuss the parameters of the plan that they have in place. And during the transition period, one of the, the recommendations came through was to have this particular committee or this council be appointed, previously had been appointed from representatives recommended by each specific city. And I know that Councilman Gallagher had served on one for Strongsville. One of the recommendations from the Transition Committee was, rather than having it be people from outside the county structure, rather have the county appoint people within the county structure. It is a seven-member board, they meet at least once per year. By statute, the representative from the county auditor's office serves as the chair of that commission, and the three representatives appointed by the, by the executive come from backgrounds within the county structure that are related to the operations. Andrew Revie is in, is in the budget office, Mr. Schiffman is in the treasurer's office, and Mr. Holliday is in the development office. Mr. Masula is here, and quite frankly, he's probably the most knowledgeable person in the county about the operations of these councils, and again, by statute, is a representative from the previous auditor's office, he will serve as, as the chair of each one of these, each one of these councils.
All right, thank you. Does council have any questions about the Tax Incentive Board? Mr. Greenspan?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question. Previously, when this was brought up, I mentioned that there's a concern in the, in the communities that the, the request has been made for the participating communities to come downtown to have these hearings and to bring with them the businesses, and I asked if it would be possible to have, as has been common practice, the, in this committee or this council meet in the current cities to which they would be meeting and deliberating.
Madam President to the councilmen, the parameters of the Ohio Revised Code section that specifically sets up these boards unfortunately does not provide any guidance for where the meetings will take place. It does, and, and you had brought that question to my attention previously, and I did go back, and I briefly discussed it with the law director. There is a parameter in the, in the closing section or portion of that that allows the committee members to request that documents and information be sent. I think it's a 10-day period of time. And so hopefully, if there is documents and information that needs to be shared with the committee member, or the council members from the specific cities, if they can do those well in advance, it may eliminate that question. But obviously, the goal of these, of these councils is to work, A, for the, for, to make sure that the plans are being followed, but also not to, not to hinder any of the development or the plans that are going forward. So that's one of the things that the, the councils are going to have to kind of work out amongst themselves. And I did discuss that with some of the members, saying that there may be issues that they need to go kind of in a, riding the circuit, as it was for the court situation, where they may have to go to other quarters.
Madam President, if I may, is, what is, and I'm having my cities are asking me these questions, obviously that's why I'm asking here. What is the expectation? What should I report back? Is it going to be, they will meet in this, the expectation, they'll meet in the cities, they'll meet in a location in the districts, or they'll have to come downtown?
Madam President to the councilmen, the hope and expectation is for the unity that they can meet here in the county, because these are public meetings and the posting of them, and the goal is to see whether they can do more than one, two, three in a particular day. And if that's the case, then obviously, they'd all have to be here. If there's specific needs or requirements that people can't be here or aren't able to be here, I think those are things that as the individual councils move forward, they'll have to deal with. Because, for example, councilmen, these, these councils will have three members that are not county employees on it, so obviously, those, they're going to have to take into consideration their times and their schedules as well. But the goal is to have them be unified here, but understanding that there may be situations that aren't going to fall within that.
And, Madam President, if I may, so as I understand it, the three members, the three members that are not listed here are of the cities to which...
Madam President, if I may, no, that's, that's partially true, and it may end up being true, but the statute reads that there, there's three separate positions, two of which are appointed by the community itself. So for example, if it was in Strongsville, they would appoint two. The other one is from the affected school district. So for example, in a situation with South Euclid-Landhurst, or for example, Cleveland Heights-University Heights, I'm, I'm thinking of a matter that Councilwoman Simon and I were involved in. That, while it was a South Euclid situation, was in the Cleveland Heights-University Heights school district. So there may not actually be three representatives from the community.
Madam President, just one further comment, just a recommendation. I, I would strongly recommend, I feel like, from a few good men, I would strongly recommend that, that these meetings be held at a minimum in the district, and preferably in the communities, as has been common practice. I believe we may start to set an unfriendly business approach to ask businesses from Westlake or from Strongsville or Solon to come into downtown Cleveland to have these hearings, and as I understand the requirement, they must be present at the meeting. So I, I think to be business-friendly, we should strongly consider, and we have no authority over it, so the administration would strongly consider having the meetings at a minimum in district, preferably in the cities to which the businesses operate.
Mr. Schron?
And to reiterate on Mr. Greenspan's comments, it seems to me that one of the things we're trying to do is, is create that impression of being part of the community, not just come to where it's convenient for us, but come to them. We do have a couple other potential places that would be maybe not directly in the community, but close enough that we have an east-side location, perhaps at Tri-C East and Tri-C West, at Corporate College, and I think that those would be nice venues to have three different locations that would make it at least semi-convenient for people to have structure going forward out there.
Those are excellent ideas, and I, obviously, I'll take down those, those recommendations and make sure that they are, are made known to the members of the, of the councils.
Ms. Simon?
Thank you, Madam President. To Assistant Director Boyle, do I understand that these meetings occur annually?
They do. By statute, they must occur on an annual basis. I believe it's no later than September.
I just want to say that for having city members to come downtown to the county, to be in the public, the countywide, is not a burden or not business-friendly. I mean, this is not some kind of unreasonable request. In fact, there's so many community members that do come downtown for the other committees and, and boards that we have in, in a frequent and regular basis. So I, I just want to say, once a year, to come down here, to, to meet with the county council perhaps, and, and to, and be a part of what's happening down here in the public, and the transparency factor, I think, is pretty vital. And it's certainly not a burden or, or not being friendly to people to come downtown. I don't want to set that up as some barrier to, to providing the statutory requirements and satisfying those.
Madam President to the councilwoman, the goal here is to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to make sure that they are represented, that their pitches are, are being, that their comments are being listened to, and that everyone is understanding what's happening. And obviously, the, as we move forward, we'll work out a process, or I expect that a process will be worked out that'll accommodate both the people that are asking for, for the tax incentives and also the county representatives, and I feel comfortable we'll be able to do that.
All right, thank you. I, I have to agree with Ms. Simon. I appreciate what Mr. Greenspan is saying, but I live in Cleveland, so I like people to come down and park and pay our parking tax and buy some food and, you know. It's, you know, our downtown is the heart of it all, so we like people to come downtown. All right, we have to vote on this. All those, is any other discussion?
Right.
All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Item number 0021, page 13 of your materials.
Motion number 2011-0021, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Nick Nardi to serve on the Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority Board of Trustees.
All right, move by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Ms. Simon. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Is Mr. Nardi here? Okay. All right, item 0024, on page 15.
Motion number 2011-0024, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of individuals who serve on the District One Public Works Integrating Committee of Cuyahoga County. One, Benita T. One, and two, Douglas L. Dillon.
Move to adopt.
By Mr. Jones and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? We have Ms. T. One and Mr. Dillon here. They were here. All right, any discussion on these matters? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Congratulations, one more task to your many task of duties. All right, item 0025, page, page 17. Madam Clerk?
Motion number... Motion number 2011 0025, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of David W. Whitehead to serve on the Cuyahoga Community College Board of Trustees.
Move to adopt.
Second.
A move by Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Is any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And then Mr. Whitehead has served for some years on the Board of Trustees of Community College. I believe he's a president, I'm sure he'll continue to serve with distinction. All right, item 0026, page 19 of your materials.
Motion number 2011 0026, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Matthew Carroll to serve as ex-officio representative on the Gateway Economic Development Corporation of Greater Cleveland Board of Trustees.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schrein, seconded by Mr. Gallagher.
Ann.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Carroll. Is he here? Okay. All right, item number 11, consideration of a motion of council for adoption of the rules. Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2011 0007, a motion adopting permanent rules of Cuyahoga County Council.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Ms. Conwell to adopt the rules. Those are the ones that came out of committee. We have labored long and hard on this project. Do we need to make any motions regarding the amendments that we made today?
Madam President, the amendments were adopted in committee and carry over to the version, so we're fine.
All right, is there any discussion on the rules?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
What is the appropriate way for me to now put my name on as a sponsor of these rules?
Yeah, just inform the...
All right, Mr. ...
I'd like to be on the...
All right, I can put my name on also. Does anybody else want to put their, Mr. Jemanna? Now that it's a done deal, everyone wants to put their name on it. Ms. Simon?
You want to put all of council's name on it?
All right, I have to use the gavel on this one, because this has been such a long and laborious task. Is there any other discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would just briefly say that this motion supersedes the interim rules that we adopted on the first day of council, which expire today. And a lot of those interim rules remain intact, but we've made a good number of improvements, such as committee appointments being for two years rather than one year, better alignment with the charter on how motions of council and vacancies in the position of president of council are filled, and better flexibility in scheduling meetings and a number of such things. And I would like to thank all of my colleagues and staff and everybody else who worked so long and hard on this and ask for support. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to commend Mr. Miller. I think we're on draft 11. We've killed a lot of trees and used up a lot of ink cartridges, printing out various versions of these. And he's done an outstanding job. I've hearing no other further discussion. Call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting draft 11 of the rules as it came out of committee indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The rules are adopted. The major hurdle. All right, item 12, consideration of an ordinance of council for first reading under suspension of the rules. We're referring to page 43 of your packet. I'd like to have the clerk read the general title.
Going to waive the rules.
Oh, suspend the rules, sorry, sorry. I got so excited about the rules before.
Madam President, I move that rule number 9D requiring that ordinances and resolutions be read on three separate regular meetings of council, and rule number 12A, not 13A, under the new rules, but it's the same, it requires reference to committee, that those two rules be suspended and that ordinance number 2011-0023 be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
It's moved by Mr. Miller, is it seconded by, is that Mr. Rogers? All right, any discussion on the suspension of the rules? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Ordinance number 2011 0023, an ordinance amending Cuyahoga County's permanent code of ethics and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Conwell, is that seconded by, is that Mr. Greenspan? All right, discussion? Mr. Greenspan?
Madam President, I wish to direct council's attention to the handouts that were distributed during the work session as being the substitute document to be used for the vote on this matter. Subsequent to the compilation of this package, the law department or the Director of Law had a few minor adjustments, so you have that package in front of you, and that's what was discussed in the work session. Fundamentally, the amendments here come to clarify some issues and some items under the direction of Law Director McLough to provide further clarity to the actual intent of the ordinance that may have been, may have not been as clear as we wanted it to be upon passage. So with that, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but I believe we're... Did you want to address?
No, that's, I mean, thank you, Council Greenspan, for, you know, giving us the opportunity to look through this. Inspector General was also very instrumental in reviewing this, and she had pointed a number of the issues that, to take it back to the original intent as to what council member, you know, what was intended in the original intent. And Councilman Greenspan's been very good in working with us and making the necessary revisions. Thank you.
And for those who are watching this or listening, we had an opportunity to discuss this in committee, in which that record is also available for anyone interested in listening. But we've had an opportunity this afternoon earlier to go over some of these changes. Mr. Brady, did you have a comment?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Madam President, officially, the version that's in the agenda is the version before the council, so I would recommend that the sponsor should make a motion to substitute the version that was distributed to the council for the version that's printed in the agenda.
Madam President, I make a motion that we substitute the document that's been presented with the document that's in the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Greenspan, seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of adopting the amended legislation indicate by substituting, thank you, Mr. Jemanna, substituting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, the ayes have it, so we are now voting on the substitute bill. Yeah, Mr. Schrein?
Please add my name to, please add my name as a sponsor at this point.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Substitute bill is adopted. All right, item number 13, consideration of an ordinance of council for first reading and referral to committee.
Ordinance number 2011 0024, an ordinance amending county resolution numbers 052208 and 052209, each dated June 2, 2005, which established charges payable for connection to the county's water and sewer supply facilities in County Sewer District Number 14 for the period December 30, 2010 through December 29, 2011, and County Council Ordinance Number, Ordinance 2011 0007, as amended, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Hey, the full text of this is on page 59. Do we have a motion?
Madam President's referred.
That's right, we refer to committee. This is going to go to the...
Public Works.
Public Works? All right, so Mr. Jones will take care of this at Public Works. Mr. Greenspan, did you want to be heard on this? This has been your project for some time.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. If the council will remember, back on January 3, at our first meeting, we adopted an ordinance that allowed Olmsted Township to roll back the connection fees to the '08 rate. And I mentioned at that time that we would be bringing, that I'd be bringing forward legislation that would allow the residents of the township and we effectively service their public works department, no different than municipalities have their own public works departments. Evidently, there was a decision made in 2009, I'm sorry, in 2005, that did not allow the residents of the township to be able to pay their fees over a 20-year period, which matches up with the note that the county received for funding of this project, required immediate payment. And immediate payment would effectively force a lot of these residents to go into bankruptcy. Legislation does is match up a payment plan from the residents to match up the loan that was received from the EPA to do the work. So I'll come to committee and discuss it further there as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 14, committee report in consideration of an ordinance of council for second reading under suspension of the rule.
Madam President?
Mr. Miller?
I move that rule number 9D requiring that ordinances and resolutions be read at three separate regular council meetings be suspended, and that ordinance number 2011-0020 be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
All right, moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Rogers for suspension of the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the rules are suspended regarding 0020.
Ordinance number 2011 0020, an ordinance providing for complimentary parking for members of the public to attend regularly scheduled evening and committee meetings of the county council at the Huntington Park Garage on a space-available basis in order to encourage public attendance and participation in the new county government, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
All right, moved by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Mr. Jones. All right, is any discussion on this, Mr. Rogers? This was your legislation.
No, not really, just this is an attempt to provide greater access to the public, to our council meetings.
So any further discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and as of next week, the public will get free parking when they come to council meetings. All right, item number 15, committee report in consideration of an ordinance of council for adoption.
Ordinance number 2011 0014, an ordinance establishing the Board of Control, establishing procedures governing the making of county contracts and the purchasing of county supplies and equipment, providing procedures for the making of public improvements, establishing procedures under which the county executive may employ experts and consultants in connection with the administration of the affairs of the county, and providing the terms upon which the county may cooperate or join by contract with any municipality, county, state, or political subdivision, or agency thereof, in making public improvements or providing common services.
Move to adopt.
Was that Mr. Jones? Yeah, it's moved by Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Conwell. I believe there's an amendment to this.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Madam President and my colleagues, there are actually four amendments. And each of the amendments, in one way or another, are things that were put together in response to concerns expressed by the administration, and they represent language that the administration supports. The First Amendment, which is being passed out, Amendment Number One, is technical in nature. Director McLough recommended it. And in the place where we currently say that contracts and other transactions shall be reviewed for legal form, the recommended substitute language is that they shall undergo legal review. So it just changes the way that's expressed. It's a little broader terminology, and I move to amend with that language.
All right, now, so we're going to vote on each one of the amendments.
Right.
All right, is there a second to that motion? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of Amendment Number One indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it.
Madam President?
Mr. Miller?
I will move on to Amendment Number Two, and this is an amendment that was worked out with Director Maury, our new chief information officer, and it relates to the way that the databases and notification requirements in the ordinance will be implemented. And what this legislation provides is that the first phase of the databases will not be required to start until September 30, 2011. It will be the same for the notification to council as to when projects come forward that are in individual wards. The searchability features remain at March 31, 2012. The amendment says that in the meantime, till the databases are in official operation, the county executive will use available resources to provide as much as possible of the information that's required. And the purpose of this amendment is to give the Director of Information Services the opportunity to look at the information requirements of this ordinance in a comprehensive manner and to come up with a plan for doing them in a coordinated fashion. And after making this review, if any amendment or change in the design of these databases is needed, there'll be time available for us to make a change if necessary. So I move Amendment Number Two.
Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Rogers. Mr. Schrein?
Yes, we could, I guess, get some questions in regards to this amendment. I know it says "shall be" on both of these indications, as far as September 30, 2011, and "shall be" with the search function by March 31, 2012. Having been involved with electronic projects before, these are mandates as opposed to the best of our ability. It seems to me that, I understand that our chief information officer is going to do this to the best of his ability and his team. However, things can happen. Databases can get corrupted, nasty things can happen, viruses. It seems to me that if you would accept an amendment that would allow us to at least build some contingency in there that shall be done to the best of their ability by those dates, would be an appropriate thing to add to both those sentences. And I'm not trying to speak for you, but I'm trying to give you some cover. Perhaps...
Do you want to come to the microphone, please?
Jeff Maury, Chief Information Officer. You're right, if you look at the amendment, a lot of our procurement data is available in our league today, but as far as some of the data that we're looking for in loans and grants and real estate data is still in a disparate situation. So we'll need some time to get that data together so that we can present it to the public on the webpage. So you're right, we'll do the best of our ability, as, you know, we're starting that now.
But I would hate to see a violation of this right up front in the event that it becomes one day after that, and we've done our best, you've done your best case, and you go live simply to meet the four corners of what we're talking about here today versus doing it within the best of your ability, which might be a week, two weeks, 10 days a month later, would be in the best interest of the county.
Madam President?
Mr. Miller?
In the discussions that I had with Director Maury, what he said is that he needed about 60 days to do a comprehensive review of these database requirements and come up with a plan. Now, the September 30 date... Now, the September 30th date gives the 60 days plus more than another 90. And the idea is that after doing the comprehensive review, at that time, the Director will know two things. Number one is whether any of the databases will require more time than September 30th to get them up and running. And the second thing is whether the structure of any of the databases would be more convenient if done in a different form. And so there will be plenty of time available for the Director to come back to us and say if there's anything here that needs to be adjusted. That's why we created as much time as to September 30th. It gives the 60 days for the planning review, plus more than an additional 90 days for implementation, and if necessary, amendment.
Yes, Madam President. I'm just looking to the language that says the database will be operational. What is our advantage of holding the feet to the fire? Obviously, the expectation is to do it. The target is to do it, but have, if, Mr. Miller, just having been through a major ERP renovation at our company, as best as we try to hit those targets, sometimes those dates move, and this, the way we're looking to pass this, says that these databases will be in place and operational. That's beyond the control of people when they give it their best efforts, and everything about it, and it would not be in our best interest as a county to put them operational based on this language. And again, all I'm trying to do is leave the, stop changing the date, but merely to identify that instead of the word "shall be," that we would give some language in it that would soften that.
President. Ms. Simon.
Cur with Councilman Schron. Why not put some more flexible language in here, just because it makes sense to be prudent now at the outset, versus having to come back to continue to amend? And you're just starting up, in all fairness, this is a comprehensive project, I would think, let's put the best efforts language in, and...
Do you have a special, specific wording in?
I would suggest to amend both those sentences, that this ordinance shall be in operation using the best efforts, starting not later than September 30th, and then again, shall be operational using the best efforts not later than March 31st.
Will you accept that amendment, Mr. Miller?
Yes, Madam President, I will accept that.
Okay, do you have the right wording down?
I do.
All right, do you want to read it again, then, for the rest of the council?
Section 4.6, the databases provided in section 4.1 through 4.4 of this ordinance shall be in operation and posted on the county's website, and the notification process provided for in section 4.5 of this ordinance shall be in operation using best efforts, not starting not later than September 30th, 2011, with the exception that the searchable database features of this database shall be in operation using best efforts, no later than March 31st, 2012.
Right. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting the amendment as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it.
Madam President.
Yes.
Amendment Number Three, and, no, I'm sorry, Amendment Number Four.
Did we skip three, or what?
We're gonna come back to three. I'm going to four next, because this one is the second part of the adjustments that were worked out with Director Maury. And this is more technical in nature, it just says two things. Number one is that the word "sale" is defined as sales of assets. We're concerned that we don't want something like how many parking spaces were sold at the Huntington Garage to be a reportable item as things that the county sold. And the second thing is it says that in reporting all completed contracts, purchases, sales, that they'll be for $1,000 or more, rather than all items regardless of dollar amount.
All right, any discussion on this amendment? All right, all those in favor of adopting it indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and number four is adopted.
Now we go to Amendment Number Three. And what this amendment...
I don't think we got a second on that. As we said, it was moved by Mr. Miller, and we needed a second. Conwell seconded, all right. Should we vote again?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
Okay. Amendment Number Three is an amendment that was worked out with Executive, our Executive Ed Fitzgerald, and Director McLough. And it relates to Section 3.7, which in its current version says, "If applicable, each of the following factors shall be considered in determining whether a bid is the lowest and best bid." And then it lists a number of factors that a quality contractor should demonstrate. The recommendation is to substitute. The county reserves the right to consider all elements entering into the question of determining the lowest and best bid, including the following, and then it would be the same list of items. And what this does is that it should help reduce the threat of litigation around the notion of, well, you didn't give enough consideration to this factor or to that factor, and therefore I should have been selected. This provides more flexible language, which allows the county to consider each of these factors, but doesn't say how much weight or which one specifically would be given priority. So I would move this amendment Number Three.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Germana. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, third amendment Number Three is adopted.
Madam President.
Madam President, if I may before, is there one more amendment?
We, that was all four.
That's it.
Okay, if I may, just going back to the amendment that Councilmember Schron proposed as to Section 4.6, if I may, just instead of saying "shall be" using "best efforts," if we can just change the language of that, to basically have Section 4.6 read, "The county shall exercise best efforts to ensure that the databases provided for in Section 4.1 through Section 4.4 of this ordinance are in operation and posted on the county's website, and the notification process provided for in Section 4.5 of this ordinance are in operation." So this way, the best effort is to exercise the best effort to give us...
That's what I meant to say.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Madam President.
I just want to say, should we put something in here, then, if the best efforts are actually achieved, and these dates, we contemplate that this may change, that they may be extended, if we can't meet these dates.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
If it appears, if it appears that the best efforts on any of the items probably won't be achieved, we would ask the administration to come to us and request an appropriate amendment. And that's why it is that we're providing 60 days for the comprehensive review, and then another 90 days plus before any of it is even under best efforts expected to start. So that gives us the time to amend it, amend it down the line if that's necessary.
All right, now, procedurally, if we want to adopt Mr. McLough's wording, then we need to vote on this, another amendment, which would be Amendment Five.
I move we adopt, move to adopt the language as read into the record by our Law Director, Mr. McLough.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Rogers.
Madam President. It would simplify if we identify that language as a substitute for the language that we amended in...
So it's a substitute for Amendment Two?
Right, as a substitute for Amendment Two.
All right, so we can call for the vote over the substitute on Amendment Two. Okay. All right, all those in favor of the substitute for Amendment Two, it's been moved... Yes.
Is this considered a verbal amendment? Do you need to suspend the rules for a verbal amendment?
Madam...
Yes.
Madam President, we're now operating under the new rules of council, in which the Chair has the discretion to accept simple verbal amendments.
All right, any other discussion on the substitute version of Amendment Two? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Now, we have, do we have a motion to adopt the amended version of 0014?
So moved.
All right, is there any discussion? This is on the Board of Control ordinance as amended. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. We now have a Board of Control. Item 16 starts on page 81, consideration of resolutions for first reading and adoption under suspension of the rules.
Madam President.
Yes.
I move that Rule Number 9D requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read at three different regular council meetings, and Rule Number 12A requiring reference to committee be suspended, and that Resolutions Number 2011-0164, 0165, those two be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
All right, moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Schron to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Madam Clerk.
Resolution Number 2011-0164, a resolution amending the 2011 annual appropriation measure by providing for additional fiscal appropriations from the General Fund and other funding sources for appropriation transfers between budget accounts, and for cash transfers between budgetary funds in order to meet the budgetary needs of various county departments, offices, and agencies, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
A move by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Greenspan.
I just have a question on the...
Mr. Robino is coming to the microphone.
Okay, thank you. On M, which has to do, it looks like we're transferring money to the Medmart project, is that correct?
Yes, Councilman Greenspan, that is an additional appropriation item. A key thing to remember here is the county's general fund is serving as a pass-through for the project sources for the Medmart project. Those project sources are the revenue from additional sales tax, quarter percent sales tax, revenue from the new 1% bed tax, and then a contribution from Positively Cleveland. So we're funneling those sources through the general fund, and then per the trust indenture, which is the framework or operating instructions for the project funding, we're transferring those out of the county to the trustee. There's a variety of accounts there, namely a construction account, a contingency account, and then bond debt service accounts. Even though the money is passing through, we still have to appropriate those dollars to transfer them out, because it is an expenditure on the county side.
And thank you. Madam President, how many payments have we made, actual payments have we made so far?
Councilman Greenspan, for the operating side of things, we've made one payment per month, and that's per the indenture. By the first business day of the month, we make a payment. They're usually in the same amount each month. We're also going to be transferring residual dollars, the December collection for the sales tax. We did not have that when we did the project funding, so we're moving those dollars out. We'll continue making that monthly payment through December. And these are separate from the payments that are going out as part of the monthly pay application. And those payments are made directly from the bank to pay the various contracts for the demolition you see going on, the excavation. The payments I'm making, or I'm appropriating here, are for bond debt service and operating lease payments, and again, per the sections of the approved trust indenture.
So, Madam President, so we've been making this payment every, I just don't recall ever seeing it on this report.
Councilman Greenspan, we've appropriated a partial amount. And again, it goes back to, we adopted the budget in October. We didn't finalize the trust indenture until end of November. We didn't fund the project and have our final payment terms identified until December. So this is just plain catch-up. So we have the full amount appropriated and able to make those payments, and also to make that transfer of December's sales tax dollars out to the trustee bank.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Greenspan, I just want to point out that for all of council, next Tuesday in our work session, we don't have a regular meeting, we do have a work session. I know Mr. Germana won't be here, but we, well, I think they will be later on in the day. We should be here about an hour, but we had anticipated Mr. Applebaum coming in and making a presentation regarding the Medmart and whatever projects and updates. So some of those questions will probably be available at this time.
Yes, Madam President, I'm not sure if Mr. Applebaum will speak to the county's payments. He can, he was very familiar, but just to leave that out there. But again, just to give you an idea, real quick, summarize, about $44 million in sources coming in this year, approximately 37.9 are going out, again, per the indenture. We're gonna have some additional dollars that we're going to contribute to the construction fund, and that's per the financing plan. So we'll be making these scheduled payments, plus making some contribution to the construction fund with the trustee to help bolster the amount of sources available to fund the project. And that's, again, that was planned as we envisioned this, going back to last year and the year before.
All right, any other questions of Mr. Robino, or any other questions on item 0164? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, item 0165, starts on page 99 of your materials.
Resolution Number 2011-0165, a resolution accepting various roof replacement projects as complete and in accordance with plans and specifications, granting authority for the county treasurer to release the escrow account in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 153.63, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective for the Brooklyn Adult Activities Center Operations Facility, Rocky River Adult Activities Center, and Transportation Services Center.
All right, any discussion, any question? Oh, I need a motion. I'm moved by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Item 17, consideration of resolutions for first reading and referral to committee.
Resolution Number 2011-0166, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into agreements of cooperation with the cities of Parma and Parma Heights for repair and resurfacing of Snow Road from West 130th Street to Ridge Road.
As usual, something going to Parma. Refer that to the Public Works Committee.
Resolution Number 2011-0167, a resolution accepting county improvement Number 3A1, rehabilitation of trenchless sanitary sewers and manhole repairs in the cities of Beechwood, Lindhurst, Mayfield Heights, and Pepper Pike, county sewer district numbers three and five, as complete and in accordance with plans and specifications, granting authority for the county treasurer to release the escrow account in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 153.63.
Hey, it goes to Public Works.
Resolution Number 2011-0168, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to contract Number CE 100240 with Robert P. Madison International Incorporated for architectural and engineering services for various projects for the period April 1, 2010, through March 31, 2011, to exercise an option to extend the time period to September 30, 2011, and for additional funds in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
It'll go to Public Works.
Resolution Number 2011-0169, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with PB Americas Incorporated, formerly known as Parsons Brinkerhoff Ohio Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed $1,734,243 for design engineering services for Highland Road Bridges, numbers 156, 157, 158, and 226, over Euclid... and two twenty-six, over Euclid Creek in the city of Euclid, authorizing the county engineer on behalf of the county executive to make an application for allocation from county motor vehicle five dollar license tax funds to fund said contract and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
It'll go to Public Works.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Seven Zero, a resolution approving plans for widening and reconstruction of Barrett Road from Spafford Road to the Berea West Corporation Line and the replacement of Barrett Road culvert numbers eight, nine, ten, and eleven in Olmsted Township, ordering that surveys, plans, profiles, cross-sections, right-of-way plans, and plat for the project be filed in the office of the clerk of council, setting the date and time of a public hearing and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
It'll go to Public Works.
Council members, I just wanted to let you know that right now, tentatively, the public hearing is going to be scheduled for June fourteenth at six fifteen P.M.
All right, that takes us up to page one twenty-seven for the next item, if anybody's reading along.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Seven One, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of self-supporting housing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed five million dollars for greater Abyssinia apartments for the purpose of rehabilitating, improving, and equipping a senior housing facility for low and moderate income seniors, authorizing the execution and delivery of a financing agreement, bond purchase agreement, trust indenture, and tax regulatory agreement, authorizing and approving the use and distribution of a disclosure document, approving related matters, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
It'll go to Economic Development.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Seven Two, a resolution authorizing the county executive or the director of development, as his designee, to execute all documents required in connection with various economic development loans for subordination with Flats East Development for the Flats East Hotel Project and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Go to Economic Development.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Seven Three, a resolution authorizing a North Coast Opportunities Technology Fund Loan in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars to Sooth Incorporated, located at three zero two one Euclid Heights Boulevard, Cleveland Heights, authorizing the county executive or the director of development, as his designee, to execute all documents required in connection with said loan.
It'll go to Economic Development.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Seven Four, a resolution authorizing the county executive through the Department of Procurement and Diversity to solicit bids on requisition number two zero one zero nine for the Year Two Pavement Maintenance Program, Apron A One B Reconstruction and Apron A Two C D One Rehabilitation.
This is Economic Development also.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Seven Five, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement with City of Cleveland in the amount not to exceed four hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred seventy dollars, ninety-one cents for reimbursement of eligible training and exercise expenses in connection with the fiscal year two thousand eight Port Security Grant Program for the period August one, two thousand eight through July thirty-one, two thousand eleven, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This'll go to Public Safety.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Seven Six, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement with Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Division of Watercraft, in the amount not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars, eighteen cents, for reimbursement of eligible training and exercise expenses in connection with the fiscal year two thousand eight Port Security Grant Program for the period August one, two thousand eight through July thirty-one, two thousand eleven, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
It'll go to Public Safety.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Seven Seven, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement with City of Cleveland in the amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars for reimbursement of eligible training and exercise expenses in connection with the fiscal year two thousand ten Port Security Grant Program for the period June one, two thousand ten, through May thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
It'll go to Public Safety. All right, Item Number Eighteen, we're up to page one hundred and ninety-nine. Committee reports in consideration of resolutions for second reading, adoption under suspension of the rules.
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President and my colleagues, I move that Rule Ninety requiring that ordinances and resolutions be read at three separate regular council meetings be suspended and Resolutions Number Twenty-Eleven dash zero zero five one, zero one three zero, one three eight, one three nine, one forty, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-four, one forty-five, one forty-six, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, one forty-nine, one fifty, one fifty-two, one fifty-nine, one sixty, one sixty-one, and one sixty-two be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
It's been moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Brady. Is everyone satisfied that all of these matters will be considered under suspension of the rule? All right, all those in favor suspending the rules for these items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. I anticipate voice votes on all of these items. If there's any request for a roll call vote, please indicate before we call a roll, before we make a vote. All right, Madam Clerk.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero Zero Five One, a resolution authorizing the county executive to prepare and enter into an amendment change order number two to contract number CE One Thousand Four Ten with the RJ Platten Contracting Company for construction of the Quincy Parking Lot in connection with the Cuyahoga County Juvenile Justice Center Project to increase the unforeseen conditions cash allowance amount from two hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars, seventy-eight cents, to three hundred fifty thousand, four hundred two dollars, thirteen cents, and for additional funds in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars, thirty-five cents, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Greenspan.
If I recall, I believe the reason for the amendment on this is to take out the crosswalk lights. Is that correct?
Are you familiar with Mr. Gallagher? Or... Ms. T. Wine?
Yes, this does separate the crosswalk from the rest of the, what was originally brought to council.
So this additional funding is for the, as it's read here, is only for the revenue-generating activity of the parking meter equipment?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Simon?
Here, and just as a quick historical perspective, this originally went into safety as a combined piece, and fortunately, we were able to get some resolution of the City of Cleveland through Mr. Gallagher's committee, and it's been resolved, and now it's, I think, ready to be addressed here. Is that correct, Mr. Gallagher?
That's correct.
Are you asking, are you ready to vote? Are we prepared to vote?
I'm sorry, what's been, this component, but not the crosswalk lights, correct? This is only the metered equipment.
Madam President, to Councilman Greenspan, that's correct. This part, we're ready. However, there, I thought, resolution on the actual crosswalk, but it has not been brought back officially yet.
We haven't seen it yet.
But it's coming.
Right.
We hope.
All right, is everyone satisfied? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Item Zero One Three O, page two seventy.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Three Zero, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract number CE One One Zero Zero One Six Two with Ports Petroleum Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed six hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars for gasoline for various county facilities for the period January one, two thousand eleven, through December thirty-one, two thousand eleven, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Moved by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Ms. Simon. Is any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Zero One Three Eight, page two hundred and ninety.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Three Eight, a resolution declaring that public convenience and welfare requires resurfacing of Columbus Road from Center Street to West Twenty-Fifth Street in the city of Cleveland. Total estimated construction cost two million, fifty-four thousand dollars, authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement of cooperation with City of Cleveland in connection with said project and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
All right, moved by Mr. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Zero One Three Nine, page two hundred and eleven.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Three Nine, a resolution accepting scour repair of Old Royalton Road Bridge, number one zero eight, over Chippewa Creek in the city of Brexville, as complete in accordance with plans and specifications, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schran, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Zero One Four Zero, page two one three.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Zero, a resolution accepting repair and resurfacing of Usher Road from Sprague Road to Bagley Road in the city of Olmsted Falls in Olmsted Township as complete and in accordance with plans and specifications, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Moved by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just for the public purpose, I just want to make it clear that these resolutions have come through committee and have been debated in the committee.
Thank you. We've, when councils had an opportunity to ask questions and get background information. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Zero One Four One, on page two fifteen.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four One, a resolution accepting rehabilitation of West Hundred Thirty-Street from Snow Road to Brook Park Road in the cities of Brook Park and Parma, as complete in accordance with plans and specifications, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Germana, seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Zero One Four Two, page two seventeen.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Two, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from Sam Center Road to the Solent East Corporation Line in the city of Solent, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
By Mr. Schran, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any further discussion? Or any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Zero One Four Three, page two hundred and nineteen.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Three, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to a local public agency or LPA agreement with Ohio Department of Transportation for the great separation of Sterns Road at the Norfolk Southern Railroad in Olmsted Township to change the funding arrangement and scope of services effective April twelfth, two thousand eleven, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Moved by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, Item Zero One Four Four, page two hundred and twenty-one.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Four, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to contract number CE Zero Seven Hundred Six Nine Zero with Trans Systems Corporation of Ohio for consultant engineering services for the great separation of Sterns Road at the Norfolk Southern Railroad in Olmsted Township to change the scope of services and the terms effective April twelfth, two thousand eleven, and for additional funds in the amount of eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
All right, moved by Mr. Schran, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Zero One Four Five, page two hundred and twenty-three.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Five, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to contract number CE Zero Nine Hundred Three Eight Eight with CT Consultants Incorporated for general engineering services for the period April one, two thousand nine, through March thirty-one, two thousand eleven, to extend the time period to December thirty-one, two thousand eleven, no additional funds required, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Zero One Four Six, page two twenty-five.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Six, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment change order number one to contract number CE One Thousand Three Forty-nine with Terrace Construction Company Incorporated for the sewer and lateral repair program for various county sewer districts to change the scope of services effective April twelfth, two thousand eleven, no additional funds required, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to...
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Zero One Four Five, page two twenty-seven.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Seven, a resolution authorizing an award on requisition number one nine one eight five to Carvo Paving Company in the amount of two million, two hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars, forty-nine cents, for repair and resurfacing of Tiedemann Road from Brook Park Road to Memphis Avenue in the city of Brooklyn, authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract consistent with said award and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Germana, seconded by Mr. Brady. Any discussion on this matter? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, Item Zero One Four Eight, page two twenty-nine.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Eight, a resolution authorizing a sub-grant award to City of Euclid in the amount not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars for a project located at two three eight zero two Lake Shore Boulevard, Euclid, in connection with the Brownfields Revolving Loan Fund Program for the period August one, two thousand eight, through July thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, authorizing the county executive to execute all documents required in connection with said award and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move... Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Schran. Any discussion on this matter?
Yeah, this is a very good project in that it's helping to clean up some of the asbestos and will ultimately link right to the lake and be a very, very positive image out there. And this is going to be part of the park aspects over there. I think it's in your area. So it's, we had some great presentations in the Economic Development Committee and talked about its impact for the benefit, not just for Euclid, but for the entire county.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. ...
I'd just like to add that, you know, the diocese of Cleveland did have a number of parishes that needed to close for economic reasons, and this aids the fact that we will not have a vacant building sitting there. So it's a very positive proposition.
All right, this is the former Saint Roberts Church. Is that correct?
Correct.
I just want to give a plug to Euclid. It's the most beautiful underrated city, I think, in our county with the access to the lake is amazing. And when I was there over the summer, it was like I was out of town at times. So this project, in connection with the development vision for that area, a boardwalk and such, I think, if they can get together, it's really going to be a destination spot. And of course, Lincoln had some media attention the last couple of days with their wind turbines. So I think Euclid is on the move. Thank you.
All right, anything further? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item Zero One Four Nine, we're up to page two hundred and thirty-one.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Eleven Zero One Four Nine, a resolution authorizing a home rental rehabilitation loan in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars to Villa Serena Incorporated for the Villa Serena Senior Citizen Apartments Project located at sixty-eight hundred Mayfield Road, Mayfield Heights, authorizing the county executive to execute all documents required in connection with said loan and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schran, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to highlight that earlier in the year that the council approved a resolution asking the state to make sure that these dollars remained available for Cuyahoga County, and we were successful in that area, in that... And we were successful in that effort. And as a result, this funding was able to continue and this project was able to move forward.
Thank you. And Mr. Brady?
I'd just like to commend Councilman Rogers on his work, for his work on this area.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, 0150, page 233.
Resolution number 2011 0150, a resolution authorizing an award on requisition number 18962 to Lawler Construction in the amount of $1,289,499 for heating unit replacement and associated energy conservation activities for the Villa Serena Apartments Project located at 6800 Mayfield Road, Mayfield Heights, in connection with the Home Weatherization Assistance Program for the period May 1, 2011 through September 30, 2011, authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract consistent with said award and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Move by Mr. Schranz, seconded by Mr. Miller. Is any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, 0152, page 237.
Resolution number 2011 0152, a resolution authorizing the issuance of notes in the maximum principal amount of $10,400,000 in anticipation of bonds for the purpose of refunding bond anticipation notes, the proceeds of which were originally to refund the county's $10,150,000 Rock and Roll Hall of Fame Museum Project Notes Series 2010 that were issued to pay the costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a library and archives facility for the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and Museum and certain improvements and renovations to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame Museum and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Move by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Miller.
Madam President, we discussed this item in committee and there was some discussion about narrowing the length of term specified in the ordinance, which was 20 years to something closer to the way it was actually going to be executed, which is closer to five years. But my understanding is that's been effectively rendered a moot point because we now have the final terms and conditions. And I would ask if we might ask Director Rubino to give us a brief summary on what the length of term, the interest rate, and any other salient things that he would like to tell us about this.
I'm Madam President, Matt Rubino, Office of Budget Management. And as I'd mentioned earlier to Councilman Miller, we have our almost final term sheet with PNC Bank. As recall from the committee meeting, we're doing a direct purchase solution with this refinancing rather than going to the public offering mode and do a direct purchase. PNC Bank will purchase the notes. They're going to be issued in the amount of $10,320, so a little less than that $10,400. We'll cover the note principal interest from the 2010 series and some of our very limited cost of issuance with this type of transaction, less than $13,000 cost of issuance. This note or loan agreement with the bank will mature on December 1, 2015, so just five and a half year engagement on the loan. The rate has not been finalized, but it will be around 2%. And I had a discussion today with people from PNC, so they've assured me it will be around 2% when we have the final term sheet. It's interesting to note, to give that some context, if we're looking at some average rates today that they provided, the one-year index for tax-exempt bonds or notes, one-year index, 10-year average was 1.87%. So we're going to borrow for four and a half years at around 2%, so just over 20 basis points of the 10-year average for a one-year note. That's a very good cost of funds. And again, as I mentioned in committee, this is a very efficient transaction. We're going to refinance existing note, enter an agreement for a loan, have good cost of funds, and be able to take out the loan in its entirety by December 1, 2015.
All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Item 0159, we're moving on, page 249.
Resolution number 2011 0159, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to agreement number AG 100201 with Department of Workforce Development for operation of the Employment Connection One-Stop System Career Centers and Work Experience Program for the period July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011, to extend the time period to June 30, 2012, to change the scope of services effective July 1, 2011, and for additional funds in the amount of $753,513 and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Of approval.
Mr. Brady, move by Mr. Brady, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion on this matter? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Item 0160, page 251.
Resolution number 2011 0160, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to contract number CE 100623 with LNE and Associates for job readiness, search, placement, and retention activities for Ohio Works First Cash Recipients for the period July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011, to exercise an option to extend the time period to June 30, 2012, and for additional funds in the amount of $428,518.8 and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move approval.
Move by Mr. Greenspan, seconded by Mr. Jones.
That was by Mr. Brady.
Brady, I'm sorry.
By Brady.
I won't go there. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to say the previous item, employment connections, the one we're passing now and the ones to come, really are excellent programs. They have, in light of our efforts to grow this economy, these type of programs kind of sometimes go under the radar. They help people who have truly been dependent on the county taxes, the human services, and the justice services that dominate our county budget. And when we're able to help these members of our county to get prepared for work and to get jobs and give them the skills to keep a job once they've had it, it really, it may fly under the radar, but it really helps our county budget in moving them from tax-dependent to becoming self-sufficient. So these have been excellent programs. I have referred people to them and I'm glad to be able to say we've given them a few more dollars.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Brady?
I appreciate Mr. Jones' comments. He's on our committee, an active member of the committee. And we had a very thorough discussion just last Thursday on these resolutions, which are all related. And we spent quite a bit of time and we had all the vendors who represent different regions of the county here in front of us, and it was a good discussion.
I thank you. Anything further? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, item 0161, page 253.
Resolution number 2011 0161, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to contract number CE 100592 with TOWARDS Employment Incorporated for job readiness, search, placement, and retention activities for Ohio Works First Cash Recipients for the period July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011, to exercise an option to extend the time period to June 30, 2012, and for additional funds in the amount of $436,617.15 and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move approval.
Move by Mr. Brady, seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Item 0162, page 255.
Resolution number 2011 0162, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to contract number CE 100593 with Westside Equimetal Ministry for job readiness, search, placement, and retention activities for Ohio Works First Cash Recipients for the period July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011, to exercise an option to extend the time period to June 30, 2012, and for additional funds in the amount of $473,901.21 and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
And move this final resolution.
Move by Mr. Brady, seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Now...
Excuse me, Madam President. Just one thing for the record, prior to voting on several items, Mr. Gallagher gave me a list of those items in which he would like to be included as a co-sponsor. And those would be ordinance numbers 0024, 0020, and 0014, and resolution numbers 0140, 0143, 0144, and 0152.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. We have next on our agenda an executive session for discussions with our legal counsel. However, I do not see Mr. Lambert here. Mr. McLuff, are you going to do that?
It's going to be with the law department.
Okay, all right. But prior to going into our executive session, I understand there's someone who wanted to make a public comment, and rather than making that person wait, I was going to take them out of order.
Madam President, Mr. Gerald Henley wishes to address the council.
All right, Mr. Henley, you want to come forward? I've known Mr. Henley a very long time. We have extended the comment from two to three minutes. Mr. Henley is very verbose, and you have three minutes with a little yeast.
Thank you, Madam President, and to county executive, officials, and to council members and ladies and gentlemen. I have a couple of items that, one was regarding, I was glad to see that Julian sponsored the resolution to have the parking because I went around the block about 15 times trying to find a place to park. So, and I got here late on account of that. But having said that, but thank you again, Julian. I'd like to say too, for two items, one is the appraisers that I guess they were hired and I was going to speak to that issue regarding the appraisers. But I want to alert the council, and the council already knows, that Cleveland is the hub of this county. And knowing that Cleveland is the hub of the county, it looks like, and I'm not saying this for a joke, but we'll be having people to make appraisals and we won't have any appraisal properties because 19% of all of the properties in Cleveland is either vacant or abandoned. So that's something that we need to take into account. And having said that, with Mr. Miller and Mr. Schranz being the budget chair and finance, and Mr. Schranz being economics and planning, I would like to recommend to the council that it form a committee that begins to study the flight of people from Cleveland to stabilize the population. We have a deplorable condition and the plane dealer points it out on a regular basis and it seems like that we don't have any call of urgency to stop it, even in this building that we have right here is situated in Cleveland. And if we continue the erosion of the tax base, I don't know what we could say about what is going to happen here. But all of the business takes place at the hub. This is the hub of the county and the county hub is suffering. I think that's a little premature.
Yeah, we agree with that.
I think the county hub is suffering tremendously, and I hope that someone gives some serious thought, this new council, some serious thought to the planning and especially the members that have, districts are either contiguous to Cleveland or in Cleveland. And I hope that that's something that's taken very seriously. Now, the next item that I'd like to discuss is the technologies report that Mr. Greenspan, I've never met him before, I went to some of the meetings and the runnings, but I thought that was a good idea. And Madam President, I hope that, not any offense, but I would say that, to say that that would be something that the county couldn't afford and prematurely said and not know the cost of it, I think that's, I don't know how you would put that, but I'm saying that we're coming to find out that the juvenile detention center went from $50 million to $189 million. I think that, and for one of the judges to reference it as they think they deserve it, I think that's an insult to the public. I think that if you want to find the money to fund that program and another program, the Family Justice Center that Judge Adrian champions, and I don't hear any discussion about that for families, I'm saying that you could take the money from that budget, from that budget over there with the juvenile court, it's as if they're not even taking any of the furniture with them. So I'm saying that if we're talking about reform, I thought somebody would begin to really take the bull by the horns and really begin a reform effort, but we look like we're doing the same old thing. And one of the sheriffs told me outside that it's the same circus, just different clowns. And I'm, and I'm...
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Henley.
I didn't say it to be funny, and I'm saying this to you too. I hope that in the future, that you don't make assumptions as if you know where the votes are. And my consulting company, Henley Consultants and Associates, the planning of this county and of this city, especially the city with all the closed school buildings...
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Henley. We've actually given you double your amount of time. Mr. Brady, do you want to respond?
And it's unfortunate that Mr. Henley wasn't able to be here in time to hear your opening comments. But I do think the point that he makes around the appraisal and about the impact of the vacant properties in the community over the last several years is a very important point. And I know we've been discussing the need for the council to work closely with the administration about this upcoming appraisal and its impact.
And I would just comment, Mr. Henley, we are open to all kinds of technologies, but there are procedure and procurement policies that we have to go through. So we'll be looking at a number of possibilities, and we already have a technology person who is employed by the county who could be doing some of these things without additional tax dollars. So we're looking at it very carefully, but we really appreciate your comments and the opportunity to hear from you.
Sure, as a parting comment, and thank you for allowing me the double time.
Yeah, you're now on triple time, and we've been going since, I left home at 8:00 this morning, so...
That you spread, but well, you're all getting paid for it, so I hope you don't, I hope you don't get too, you know, too antsy about trying to get out of here because...
But we have other things to do.
It's not like you're volunteering.
Yeah, but Mr. Henley, we have other matters on the agenda for the table.
I'll be coming and I'll be saying, I'll be coming. This is my first time coming, I'll be back.
And please come back.
I hope to see progress being made because I have, in the 25 years I've been here, I've not seen any progress made. I've watched...
Well, Mr. Henley, I wish you had come to all of our other meetings. I think, I speak for all of this council, that we have made a tremendous amount of progress, and I'm very proud of the very, very hard work and dedication of all the members of this council.
Well, you have to wonder who that's according to who.
Mr. Henley, thank you very much for your comments. As of, we have a next item on our agenda is executive session. As of January 28, 2011, there were 14 pieces of litigation pending in various state and federal courts in which Cuyahoga County is a party. Other matters may have arisen since that time. While I as president and some members of the council have had an opportunity and been supplied with the list of those pending actions, neither I nor all the members of council are aware of the factual details, potential liability of the county, or the overall nature of these matters. I might point out that the information regarding any lawsuit against the county is a public record and is available on the website of state and federal courts. The county law director, Mr. McLuff, has contacted us in order to make a presentation to the entire council regarding these pending matters and apprise the council of pertinent details, including but not limited to potential liability. This is important because at some point, council may be called upon to make a decision regarding a final disposition of these matters. Conferences with an attorney for a public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to a pending litigation or imminent court actions are specifically exempted from the requirement sections of Ohio Revice Code 121.22, the so-called Ohio Sunshine Law, which means that the law specifically provides that conferences by public bodies with their attorneys for the purpose of being apprised of issues regarding litigation are not to be held in public. I am sure that the public can appreciate the fact that in their own lives, you would not want discussion between you and your attorney regarding pending litigation open to the public, nor would you want the county to be at a disadvantage in any litigation because of the legal tactics, potential liability, and confidential information between council and their lawyers to be made public. You as the public have elected us and entrusted each of us with a grave responsibility. Each of us takes this responsibility very seriously.
of us with a grave responsibility. Each of us takes this responsibility very seriously, and that is to ensure that the public trust is well-maintained and that we make decisions based on pertinent factual information. To that extent, we must confer with our attorneys. No decision regarding the final disposition of these matters will be taken during the session. It will be informational only. Minutes will be prepared relative to the number of matters discussed and the duration of the meeting. The executive session is anticipated to last no more than 45 minutes. We are asking that members of the public and the staff, please vacate the council chambers because the size of our small office in the back is not sufficient for all persons. At the end of our executive session, you will be asked to come back in if you so choose. Is there a motion for, to go into executive session?
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, I move that the council at this time go into executive session for the purpose of having a conference with our legal staff regarding matters of litigation that are pending before the council.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Schron. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
To executive session. Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
All right, motion here to go into executive session. Yeah, we would ask that those persons who are not members of council or staff, please vacate our premises.